Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the First County Council, this seventh day of September. I'd like to call our meeting to a close, if everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. Start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Ananasebe, who have a longstanding relationship with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse indigenous Matia and Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation in the stewardship of the land on which we live and work. Okay, we need a motion to confirm the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like added? Oh, sorry.
Disclosure.
Very interesting. Oh, oh, sorry. I skipped the Q and A interest. If you're interested, you can disclose that now or as the meeting goes along. And now we'll move to confirmation of the agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to add or change? If not, we need a motion that the September 7, 2023 agenda be approved, moved by Councilor Casenberg, seconded by Councilor Duncan. All those in favor carried. We have twenty-six items on our consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to hold or they have questions on any of the items? Councilor Duncan?
Six point seven, the town of Emo Resolution about black ash.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so then the council receives consent items, consent agenda items, six point one to six point two six, excluding six point seven, and approves the August 3, 2023 council minutes. Moved by Councilor Smith, seconded by Councilor Orr. All in favor? Carried. Okay, Councilor Duncan, go ahead.
Just, I think we're gonna have to have staff bring back a report with regards to our forest conservation bylaw because as of January, the moratorium on the protection of black ash runs out. And it's gonna be, it's listed under the Endangered Species Act now, so I think we're gonna have to make some adjustments to our conservation bylaw. So if staff could look into bringing back a report about that with our authorization, that'd be great.
Okay, you wish to move that?
Yes, I will.
Six point seven, do you go to staff with a report to come back? Okay, do I have a seconder? Councilor Dermott. All those in favor? Carried. The brain has to get back into the motion here. What's going on? Okay, now we're moving on. We have, we do have a public meeting. And who's presenting?
And we'll bring him in. It's just the, we have a presentation, just the presentation.
Oh, okay. So we have a presentation, Perth County Housing Needs Assessment, presentation. And that is Eric's on the screen.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Party and the floor is yours.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. I'm Eric Carbonin with Watson and Associates here to present our housing needs assessment that we prepared for Perth County study findings. So Watson and Associates, oh, actually, we will need to share the presentation. Am I to share this from, from my end?
Eric, if you feel comfortable, by all means, you can go ahead and share. If you'd like us to do that, we can do that as well.
Okay, okay, then I will, then I will, then I will share my screen. Bear with me here for one minute. Hopefully, everybody can see my screen.
Yes, you can.
Okay, excellent. Sorry for the delay. So as I mentioned, I'm Eric Carbonin with Watson and Associates, Economists Limited. Our firm was retained by the county to undertake a housing needs assessment, which essentially had a fairly specific scope to review and assess the county's current and future housing needs to help the county and its area municipalities to develop housing policies to best align with existing and future housing needs and, and really looking at this not only through the existing context, but also over the next decade. The assessment considers macroeconomic conditions and demographic trends, both from a broader regional and local level, and to really understand how this is influencing housing trends across the county. What's important here is that this assessment really considers housing needs not only from a built form perspective, but also from, from a tenure, which means looking at it from a, from an ownership and rental housing lens, as well as from an affordability lens, which is, which is obviously quite a focus up in the province at the moment. So in order to examine this theme, we have to kind of step back a little bit and understand the county and recent development and growth trends over, over the last decade or so to really understand housing needs in Perth County. One interesting observation is the county has experienced very strong population growth over the past five years. Over the 2016 to 2021 census periods, the county, county's population base expanded by eight percent or about three thousand people, and this growth rate was actually higher than the provincial average over that period. We also recognize that over the next decade, the county's population growth is expected to remain strong and actually accelerate. And so it's very important to recognize housing needs over the coming decade. Well, what's important as well is to maintain at a municipal level a well-balanced and healthy community, and this includes ensuring that there's a wide range of housing options made available to the existing and future population that recognizes the broad range of household income groups that exist and are anticipated to be accommodated over the coming decade, which includes providing for a range of affordable housing options. This is in line with provincial policy direction, which is increasingly focused on housing supply and market choice to ensure that the needs of a growing population with respect to housing is, is met in a manageable fashion. So with respect to the county's housing market trends, as I mentioned, with this population growth that you've experienced over the past number of years, housing growth has accelerated in, in, in sort of in alignment with that population growth over the past five years with an average of three hundred and thirty-three units built over the last five years between 2018 and 2022. Just for some comparison, this growth rate in housing units was about double over the previous five periods, so certainly more significant with respect to development activity. Another interesting trend is that the county has historically been predominantly low-density housing and owner-occupied. So much of the housing base is single-detached, semi-detached, ground-oriented units, but what we're seeing is a shift to increasing share of higher-density housing development, including apartments. Over the past five years, about two-thirds of housing development has been in North Perth, but the other areas, the other area municipalities have also experienced housing development in Perth East, West Perth, and Perth South. One interesting observation as well is that over the past five years, housing prices and rental rates have increased at a much faster rate than average household income, and this has eroded housing affordability across the county. So over the 2016 to 2021 period, average dwelling prices in the county increased by about fifty-nine percent, which is very similar to the provincial average with respect to housing appreciation. And for comparison, incomes in the county only increased by about sixteen percent over that same period. So clearly creating some challenges from an affordability perspective. So this study assessed current housing needs, really looking at the existing situation in the county, and we recognize through our analysis that there is currently a structural deficit in terms of housing supply not meeting the needs of the current population from an housing affordability lens perspective. We've identified that there's about three hundred and fifteen housing units needed in the form of affordable rental housing to meet the needs of both the homeless population and those that are in currently in severe core need. So basically, these are households that are, that are in a situation that's precarious and, and not sustainable for, for the longer term. Addressing this deficit in affordable housing should be considered a high priority for the short to medium term in the county. As I mentioned earlier, we expect the county to grow significantly over the next decade with respect to population, and this will really drive the need for additional housing, especially in the areas of, of a more diverse housing stock, including rental and affordable housing. This growth is being driven largely by a significant amount of net migration coming from other parts of the province and also internationally. And we're also experiencing an aging population, which is important when examining housing needs. The county is also seeing growth in young adults and new families, so younger age population that are seeking more affordable and competitively priced homeownership and rental opportunities. So hence, it's important that the future housing mix reflects this range of housing needs with respect to density typology and recognizing the various levels of income from this anticipated population growth. In terms of future housing needs over the next ten years, our study has identified that the county requires about thirty-two hundred new housing units over the next decade to meet this future population growth. This includes about two thousand owner-occupied housing units, which accounts for about sixty-three percent of that total, and about twelve hundred rental housing units, reflecting about thirty-seven percent of the total. Of that total thirty-two hundred units, about one-fifth is expected to be affordable in nature in terms of meeting the needs of, of the growing population. Of that countywide housing growth of thirty-two hundred units, we anticipate a large share of that will be accommodated in North Perth, about seventy-seven percent, followed by twelve percent in West Perth, eight percent in Perth East, and three percent in Perth South. So looking at this collectively from a housing needs perspective, that, that examines both the existing structural deficit and the future housing needs based on this growing population over the next decade, we expect an overall need of thirty-five hundred units of new housing supply over the next decade, which represents an average of about three hundred and fifty units per year to be required to be constructed. Of this amount, about forty-three percent or about fifteen hundred are expected to be rental housing units with about fifty-seven percent or about two thousand units being ownership, owner-occupied type dwellings. Of that entire thirty-five hundred units, we expect that about nine hundred and twenty-five units or twenty-six percent of that share to be affordable in nature. So currently, Perth County has about seventeen hundred housing units in the development approvals process. One observation is that the supply is not all that well-aligned with the anticipated existing and future need from a rental and affordability perspective. Many of the units that are in the development approvals pipeline are, are intended for the ownership market and are of low-density typology, whether in the form of single, semi-detached and townhomes. And so one clear message from our work is that more emphasis needs to be made to diversify the housing supply coming online over the next decade to meet the anticipated demand. And as such, we expect that the county and its area municipalities will require, you know, a greater supply of active and a more diverse range of housing projects, especially in the affordability realm to meet this, to meet this need. So in order to achieve the requirements of the demand that's existing and anticipated, we do recommend that the county and its area municipalities consider, you know, encouraging and enabling a greater supply of housing to come online that's more diverse in nature, and that includes focusing on higher-density development to ensure that there are shovel-ready and development-ready sites available for, for development, particularly in infill and intensification locations. Also to consider regulatory incentives, which might include means to try and improve project feasibility for rental and affordable housing projects through providing for greater flexibility and development approvals process, development permissions, parking requirements, and design considerations that, that can improve feasibility of, of these types of developments, and also to consider financial incentives, the focus on reducing upfront costs of development as well as the operational costs moving forward. These types of incentives would need to be looked at through further study to understand what would be most appropriate to meet the county's existing and future housing needs. We also do recommend that the county reassess its housing needs on a regular basis, and a needs assessment should be completed as an update every three years as a means to monitor demand and supply considerations. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, be happy to, to take them.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Ward Nag. It's through you. Thanks, Eric. Looking at, looking at page three of your presentation, so the market trends the past five years. You have Perth East had eighteen percent and West Perth had twelve percent. So looking forward through to page six of your report, so the future needs. You've got Perth East, sorry, West Perth at twelve percent higher, and then Perth East at eight percent. So there's just a bit of a shift, a change there in those two townships. I'm just curious as what the, the factors are you're looking at, whether it's how much inventory we have, whether you're looking at more immigration coming to one township versus the other? Just curious as how those, why those are kind of different compared to the trend.
Yeah, it's, you know, obviously, there's, there's a, you know, the, the last five years is, is, is clearly, you know, fairly small snapshot in time. It also reflects a bit of an anomaly with respect to, you know, a period of COVID and, and sort of the post-COVID environment, which, which obviously had an impact on, on the market. You know, as far as the, the anticipated growth over the next ten years, the growth allocations and, and the anticipated growth has been adapted from the current OP review and growth management work that's currently being undertaken by the county, and Watson and Associates has been leading that through a, a separate initiative. And so that, those allocations are really based on, on, on broader expectations of, of market demand, looking at supply considerations at the local level and, and where we expect the market, you know, to, to be over that ten-year period. So which, which figure were you, were you referencing with respect to the ten-year forecast? I just want to make sure that I'm comparing the metrics correctly here.
So forecast for West Perth is twelve percent, three hundred and seventy units, and eight percent, two hundred and forty units in Perth East.
Right.
Whereas looking back at the trend, it was kind of, it was reversed with those two townships.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, these are, you know, there's, there's nuances there, kind of recognizing that there will always be some shifts and changes in the market over, over, over these types of smaller increments and you know, I, you know, I, I think it's, it's very much based on sort of the supply opportunities that were identified over the next, you know, five to ten years, and, and also just the market trends where we expect to see development pressures in these area municipalities that helped inform this. I think it's really important that in, in looking at a, at a, at a countywide housing study of this type, that it, that it focus more on the countywide need as opposed to the area municipal allocations, because it's, it's really the county level needs assessment that I think is most critical for, for the county to, to address, and then, of course, the area municipalities will need to consider, you know, their, their role in this at a, at a, at a, at a more, more local level, and this is intended to be a starting point for that conversation.
Okay, other questions? Councilor McDermott?
Through the warden. Just wondered how you figured out what buildings or apartments or things like that that needed repair? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the page that they reported that was on.
Right, okay. I believe I know which figures you're referencing. So in, in section three of the report, where we do go into a discussion on the existing housing base in, in the county of the approximately fifteen thousand housing units. We've looked at owner-occupied and renter-occupied dwellings, drawing on census data from 2021. And in the census data, there is an assessment made at the county level as well as provincially to look at those units to understand, you know, their relative, you know, state of, of maintenance and, and repair. So that data is collected from, from StatsCan Census and is specific to renter, renter-occupied households as well as owner-occupied households. And so it essentially asks, you know, either the homeowner or the tenant, the, you know, what types of repairs are required for their units, and so those metrics are summarized and compared against the provincial averages. So the idea here is to really look at the relative health or condition of those housing units. And, you know, conclusion from our work is that, you know, the, the housing stock in 2021 in the county is in relatively good health, meaning that only a small share require any major repairs, and for the most part, only regular maintenance is, is required, which is a, which is a positive indicator.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilor Ajerson?
So you use the word affordable in here several times, and for good reason. I want to know what your definition of affordable is.
Well, the definition in our, in our work is essentially the, the provincial definition that comes from the PPS, the current PPS, which essentially is an income-based definition that essentially says that affordable housing should be that where household incomes and households with, with household incomes are only spending no more than thirty percent of their, their, their income on an annual basis on, on, on housing costs, whether that be ownership or, or rental. So that's how affordability is, is being defined in our reporting, and that definition is consistent with the definition that's used also by the federal government in, at the CMHC, for example. So this is a, a definition that is, is, you know, broadly accepted and is applicable here, and when looking at housing needs from an affordability lens, this, this is how we have identified the number of, of, you know, housing units that are required by, by those various affordability categories.
So just a quick follow-up. I'm not bad in math. I'm not a real estate agent. But I'd be hard-pressed find a home in Perth County. A new, a new build or whatever, no matter how dense the, the development is, that you could come close and defining as affordable. Because based on incomes and factories in Perth County, and Mayor Todd Casenberg pointed out what coverage was in North Perth at a meeting, there's no such thing as affordable housing. And I, I struggle with that. I realize we have to have homes for these people. I just don't think it's doable. I guess it's the word I'm gonna use, not feasible, doable. Like I, we need to come up with a better something to get the cost down, and we can't certainly subsidize every home built be affordable.
Yeah, no, definitely a, a good observation, and, and certainly I, I agree with your comment. I, I think one of the challenges in Perth County is that much of the new inventory that has been built has been single-detached and, and more of an executive and premium-type build, and that reflects in the average home prices for these newer dwellings, which our survey work has identified as being, you know, about around eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which, which clearly is not affordable for, for, for many. I think part of the, the challenge is to try and shift the focus of housing development in the county to provide for a more a broader range of housing typology, so higher densities, whether they be, you know, stacked townhouses, apartments, you know, condos, you know, secondary suites. Essentially, housing that, you know, from a square footage perspective and also from a built form perspective is, is, you know, more moderate in, in, in cost to, to develop, and as such, you know, can be more affordable for ownership. But also on the rental side, I think, you know, an increasing share of purpose-built rentals would be, would be quite important. And not all of that needs to be, you know, subsidized or, or non-market housing, meaning that, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily require, you know, subsidies or, or public funds to, to support. Obviously, that's an important element or part of this discussion as well. But even just in the market lens, having a more diverse range of housing typologies, including rentals, would, would, would go, you know, a long way to helping address this affordability issue.
Okay, anyone else with comments? Councilor Trunkowski?
Through you, the warden. Thanks, Eric, for your presentation and report. I guess in your report, you, you, in your response to the last comment from Councilor Ajerson, you touched on the three things that you mentioned in your report. How do we achieve fulfilling the need? You mentioned the higher density of development portion. I wanted to ask you about the regulatory incentives and financial incentives that you touched on in your report. You said that further study would be required to determine what those incentives look like, so I guess I, I would be curious to understand more about what exactly that, like what, what do those incentives look like? Because as a public government is not a bank, we can't finance development directly, and we have restrictions under the municipal act that would prevent us from doing so, so then you're looking at the private sector. As you mentioned earlier, to encourage them to shift the developments away from single family homes into multi, multi-unit dwellings. But the impasse is that the builders are largely set up for single homes, and their business model is set up for single homes. So we literally have to shift the industry, convince the industry to, to change their way, their business model. And that's not easily, not easily done, so. And you mentioned what, you mentioned further study about these incentives, so I, I would like to get a closer look at what that, what those are.
Right, okay. Yeah, well, I think there's maybe two parts here. One is, you know, I think there is, there's clearly a need for, you know, as a next step, you know, well, at least my recommendation would be to undertake, you know, more of a, a housing strategy that would really look at, you know, tools and programs that would enable the county and its area partners to be able to deliver more effectively on these housing needs that have been identified in this foundational report. And then that might include an implementation action plan, so concrete steps that would be taken to, to help you, you know, get Um to help you, you know, get there. Um the area municipalities, um three out of the four have have submitted applications. Uh for funding for the Housing Accelerator Fund through the CMHC, um and each of them have identified. Um action plans as a starting point to this discussion, and so there's a potential synergies here for the county to work with its area partners on. On this type of initiative. Uh to give you some ideas on on the regulatory and financial incentives. Um the regulatory incentives, um certainly, I think, looking at more flexible, um you know, designs, parking standards that, you know. Uh that may allow for, you know, improvements in feasibility um in in development projects, especially for multifamily and higher density. Uh developments. Um so that would be certainly something to to consider. On the financial incentives, there are, you know, a range of tools that municipalities can. Tap into, um you know, they may be waiving certain municipal fees. Um there may be opportunities to um, you know, to look at some type of uh tax incremental. Uh grants, for example, on on property taxes uh that may reduce, you know, operating costs moving forward that may be particularly applicable for. For purpose-built rentals. Um so there are, you know, a range of tools that could be uh applied. Um and there are obviously costs involved financially uh in in many of these cases, but there are also. You know, potential funding from other levels of government as well, and and so this really, I think, needs to be looked at. More comprehensively to to really understand how to best position the county um in 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 meeting its housing needs over the longer term.
Um through you, Warden. Thanks, Eric, for your response. And just one supplemental comment. Um it's fine to waive fees and offer tax relief, but. That shortfall in income has to be picked up somewhere else. So um. You're, it's o- it's okay to offer the incentives, but the municipal in at the end of the day still has their own bills to pay. So it's kind of getting into a circular. Circular argument or circular discussion, so. It would be great if the upper tiers could, federal provincial governments could offer more. Or help, but then that money comes from the same taxpayer as well, so. Just uh six of one and half dozen of the other, just it's it's frustrating, so. Fine, thanks.
Right, and I guess one one final comment on that. I think part of it is is also, and and certainly I recognize that. And and as a firm, we do a lot of work in fiscal impact work, so we certainly recognize. Um the cost to municipalities, um and I think any housing strategy and implementation plan. Likely should include a uh fiscal impact analysis to understand that any recommended. Approaches uh on financial incentives be addressed through a fiscal impact analysis, so there's a, you know, good understanding of. Of sort of the net benefits uh to any initiatives that might be considered, including uh impacts to the local tax base.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it and. And I'm sure we'll be looking at it uh as time moves on, so have a great rest of your day and. Thanks again.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time today.
Okay, uh we will move on then to staff reports and the first, oh, we have a motion, yes, see, I'm up. Not getting it today. Counselor received the presentation from Watson and Associates on Housing Needs Assessment, Perth County. For in front of. By Counselor Ajerson, second by Counselor McDermott, all those in favor? Eric. Now we'll move on to staff reports. And the first one is under planning and we have an application for plan of subdivision. Uh submitted by Baker Planning Group on behalf of two five seven four eight three five Ontario. Limited and we have Jeff with us this morning to uh do this uh presentation, so Jeff, good morning and welcome and the floor is yours.
Morning, thank you. Caroline Baker has sent in an application on behalf of two five seven four eight three five Ontario Incorporated. She submitted applications for an official plan amendment and a plan of subdivision. They were deemed complete in January of this year. And Perth County Council adopted the official plan amendment eh on April sixth. Subject lands are located to the west of Galt Street at the end of William Shakespeare Street in Shakespeare. Property is approximately zero point six five hectares in size and the site wraps around the William Shakespeare Street road allowance. Proposed plan of subdivision will allow for four single detached dwellings, it needs semi-detached dwellings and will extend William Shakespeare Street. Into a called the SAD. Official plan amendment changed the designation of the subject lands from institutional recreational to a residential designation. The property zone, right, right, sorry, residential medium density R two. And the subject lands are located within the settlement area as defined by the provincial policy statement. O subdivision would provide for an efficient use of the resources and infrastructure and will provide for a range of housing types. With intensification of that Shakespeare community. Development is located next to a community trail and it is within walking distance of amenities that include recreational facilities. A public school and a religious institution. Official plan that defines a broad range of permitted uses and service urban areas require full municipal servicing for all new developments. Official plan provides density targets are intended to be used as general guidelines with new single detached ones being developed at a rate of fifteen units per hectare and semi-detached. dwellings in range of fifteen to twenty-five units per hectare. The proposed densities are compatible with the character in the area and they are consistent with the official plan policy. Development provides a continuous connection to the existing residential development to the east. There is however an existing landlocked parcel immediately to the west of the property that has the same owner as the part owner of the property at thirty-nine eighty-nine James Street. And that owner still continues to have access to the landlocked parcel through the property at thirty-nine eighty-nine James Street. This plan of subdivision is located within the serviced urban area and a servicing agreement has already been completed with the township of Perth East. The subject lands are in close proximity to the recreational amenities, including the baseball diamond, painting center and a walking trail. Alpkin was requested to explore the possibility of including a pedestrian connection to the existing trail system to the immediately to the south. Alpkin reviewed that potential walkway connection connection and expressed a concern that they might lose additional lands. Outside of the existing servicing easement that could result in a loss of a residential of lots. The lands are located within two blocks of main entrance to the walking trail. And then additional pedestrian connection would be used for a small number of residential properties. So planning staff have accepted the analysis provided by the consultant and agree that a pedestrian connection is not necessary for the orderly development of that subdivision. The developer will be expected to rely on a cash and new parkland dedication for the subject lands and as a condition of draft approval and that is included in the recommendation. The size and proximity of the subject lands to local amenities would suggest that cash and new dedications preferred to land dedication within this plan of subdivision. They've also submitted an archaeological assessment. And that assessment included that the subject property no longer has any cultural heritage value or any archaeological potential. MTO requires a building and land use permit, assigned permit. An individual encroachment permits for any utility encroachment who works identified within the highway seven and eight property limits. The site is approximately two hundred and ninety-five meters north the CN rail line. We have not received comments back from the CN railway. But although the residential subdivision is located within the three hundred meter noise influence setback. The medium residence residential R two zone requires a rear yard setback of seven point five meters. So when you add that to the existing two hundred and ninety-five meters, they are more than three hundred meters away. From that noise influence. As a result, a noise study submission has not been required as part of this subdivision application. Enbridge Gas has also reviewed this plan of subdivision. They requested a condition of final approval be included for easements to be provided to Enbridge Gas. For their services and that's been included in the draft plan conditions. Recommended recommended conditions of draft approval have been circulated to Alpkin and they have expressed no concerns with the condition. The notice of application for the official plan amendment and plan subdivision was circulated in January. Public meeting was held on March sixteen. At county council and Perth County Council adopted the official plan amendment on April sixth. At the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council. The council of township of Perth East received the draft plan subdivision report and made a recommendation to county council. At the application for plan subdivision be approved subject to the conditions that have been included in this report. And planning staff are in support of the draft and the subdivision and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, anyone have some questions or comments? Counselor McDermott?
Uh good one. Uh just on page one sixty, your map. I think the southern boundary of the uh. Area of this draft subdivision, I think it's uh it's out into the uh. Uh soccer field.
Uh through the warding, yes, I think the mapping at the time um showed a lot incorrectly, so when we did our GS map. Those lands, but they are not actually part of the plan of subdivision. So that that correct mapping is included with the plan of subdivision, which is shown on. The next slide, yes, that next slide shows the proper property boundaries.
Oh, but I just wanted to make sure that. Your records were okay.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Counselor Orr?
Uh through the board, uh Jeff, great. I love the subdivision, fully supportive of it, noticing that there's uh four single detached residences. Based on the report that we just heard from Watsons, is there any way that we could? Recommend that each of the new houses has a secondary. Unit in it and it will not be for the people that are there now, but down the line. So like a separate entrance, separate washroom in the basement if there's basement in that. Is there any way that we could? Make those suggestions?
Through the ward, and we can make that suggestion to the applicant. Uh the zoning is an R two zone, which does allow up to a maximum of three units on the property. So they have the ability to increase the densities on some of those lots if they desire to do that. Um so we can make the recommendations of them. It's only an already permits that type of news.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Ajerson?
Well, I just had a very similar question to Counselor Orr, because in the report it said this development is. Very compatible with the area and it's same amount of density. We just got a report that said we got to get more dense, more intensified, more there's more of that. I'm thinking, hmm, that doesn't add up. So I agree with Counselor Orr, it should be. A little more intense and the ability to put far more. Presidencies or. Hold their. Building spots on those properties. It's gonna have to be the way we do it or you're you're gonna run out of land. Just a comment. It's nice, nice report. I like the. Like the way they're doing it, just I think, God, it's just not dense enough.
Counselor Kastenberg?
While I have, of course, registered many times, concerns about density in Perth County in in terms of housing proposals have been brought to us. I do point out that it is an option to the developer to put up to, uh. I believe three units, two additional uh residential units in accordance with the current Perth County official plan. So for each of those lots, there could be two additional units that are. You know, conforming with our official plan policies, as I understand it. Uh perhaps uh our planner can assist with the comment on that.
Through the word, yes, there is that opportunity to pro- provide those additional units as part of their development. I don't think that's their intention at this point in time, but they can develop those lots to allow for, develop those buildings to allow for additional units. If directed to do so.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So we do have a motion. There are seventeen conditions. I'm going to try to condense them. Uh so that uh I'm not going to read every word per word here, but. So everyone knows as we start, so counsel received the application for plan of subdivision. Submitted by Baker Planning Group on behalf of two five seven four eight three five Ontario Limited. PE twenty-two dash O two, report for lands described as part of lot twenty-two concession one, southeast toward. And all of lots one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight and one sixty-five, part of lot one sixty-six, part of West Street. Closed by bylaw, one eighteen, instrument number R two. Five five zero six nine, part of Wellington Street, closed by bylaw number one eighteen, but number R two five five zero six nine. Registered plan number three three three, township of Perth East. And that council approves the application for draft plan of subdivision, PE twenty-two dash O two dash two five seven four eight three five, Ontario Inc. Reported for lands described as part lot twenty-two concession one, southeast toward and all lots one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight and one sixty-five. Part of lot one sixty-six, part of West Street, closed by bylaw one eighteen, instrument number R. Two five five zero six nine, part of Wellington Street, closed by bylaw, number one eighteen, instrument number R two five five zero six nine. Registered plan number three three three, township of Perth East, subject to the following conditions. And number one, this approval applies to the draft plan prepared by MTE. File number four eight or four six eight eight one dash one hundred dash D one dated October twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Showing a total of eight lots on a total area of point six five hectares. With the following lots, one six seven eight, single detached residents, lots two, three, four, five, or semi-detached residents. Uh extension of William Street, Shakespeare Street, number two, the owner developer. Enter into a subdivision agreement with the township of Perth East and the terms in the agreement be satisfied due to the township, but limited to A provisions for phases. B provisions for construction of the street to a standard acceptable by the township. C provisions for installation sidewalk pedestrian walkways. To the township standard, D provisions to installation, connection to potable water, surfaces sanitary and storage sewagees. Fire protection, stormwater management, conveyance of facilities. E provision for lot grading drainage and related installations, F provisions trees landscaping. Including topsoil, sod and streets and any other public areas. G provision for street lighting, H financial securities requirements, and I other matters determined by. Perth East. All development standards will be specified by the township and the agreement shall be contained, satisfied. Three provisions to address requirements as determined necessary by other review agencies. Number three, the subdivision agreement be approved by the planning department prior to. The first planning department prior to final approval, four. Uh the subdivision agreement be registered against the land to which it applies once the plan of subdivision has been registered, five. The subdivision satisfy outstanding financial charges to the township of Perth East prior to final approval, six. Aspects of the water sewage. Disposal, electric services, stormwater management be confirmed acceptable to the township and appropriate approval authorities. Prior to final approval, Perth East shall confirm the plan of subdivision proposed development con- conforms to Perth East zoning bylaw, eight. Preliminary grading and drainage plan for the proposed development to the satisfaction and approval of Perth East and the developer has. Provided securities for works of satisfaction to the township of Perth East, nine parkland dedication arrangement. They made in accordance with the Planning Act and consistent with the township's parkland dedication fee policy and the satisfaction of Perth East. Ten proposed new lands be constructed as public streets according to municipal standards and satisfaction of Perth East and that they be named. To the satisfaction of Perth East. Eleven, the road allowances shown on the plan be dedicated to. Perth East. Twelve, subdivision. Be registered as a single phase generally in accordance with the attached plan dated October twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and further attempt to the phasing may be permitted subject to the review. And acceptance of Perth East prior to the final approval by the county of Perth. Thirteen, prior. Uh final approval, owner development shall submit for review and approval to Perth East a detailed stormwater management plan. Fourteen, easements required for municipal services be provided by the subdivision to the satisfaction of these six fifty. Easements may be required for utilities not limited to phone, television. Cable, gas, hydro, internet or stormwater drainage purposes that be granted. Gratuitously to the appropriate utility provider, agency or authority to the satisfaction of the communication provider, sixteen, the owner. Developer agree to satisfy the requirements of Canada Post with respect to delivery of mail, including. Suitable location for the community mailboxes and the subdivision agreement, including clauses required by Canada Post and seventeen, the owner developer. Enter into necessary easements or agreements required for utility services. So in a nutshell, so we need a mover and a seconder, moved by. Counselor McDermott, second by. Counselor Ajerson, any more questions or comments? All in favor? Eric, great, thanks, Jeff. That was a big report. Okay, now we're going to move on to a official plan amendment number two oh four of the persons and we have Jerika with us this morning, so. Welcome, Jerika, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, so thank you, council. This is a familiar file to um. Perth County Council and especially to West Perth Council members, um, since the public meeting for this file was held on July sixth, twenty twenty-three. So what I am doing today is bringing forth a recommendation for council to consider. And this concerns lands uh, at three one one Perth Road, one sixty-three. And this is an existing lot of record, just so could the community of Fullerton in West Perth. So next slide. So the application before you today is to change. The primary or secondary aggregate designation on the property. To agriculture. And this would uh, potentially facilitate um, the use of the lands at for. Or at least uh, allow the contemplation of the use of the lands for a single detached dwelling on existing lot of record. So this application was submitted in conjunction with the zoning by law amendment to uh, the municipality of West Perth, which was D fourteen dash fourteen dash twenty-one. Which has been approved in principle with some modification on August twenty-first. Uh, so next slide. So that, this is an outline of the property, you can see that in the bold black lines, and then that. Outline red portion is going to be a potential building envelope. Uh, next slide. So what is currently on the property is the primary or secondary aggregate resource designation, and that prohibits most. Forms of development. Um, there is also a floodplain designation on this property that is not proposed to change. And the applicants have submitted studies that speak to the fact that there is no commercially viable aggregate deposits on the site anymore. They have also submitted a natural um. Uh, environmental impact assessment due to the fact that there is a woodlot located on the property. And as such, in agreement with the applicants, planning staff are recommending that in addition to the change of designation for the aggregate. To agriculture for the portion of the property that has in the woodlot. Uh, that the portion of the property that does have the woodlot be identified as natural resource environment. Uh, which is demonstrated on the right there. If you go one more slide. So on the left would be what the new um, land use designation would result from uh. O P A two oh four. And on the right would be the com- combination of the zoning by law amendment. So in addition to a natural resource and environmental zone. Um, and a special agricultural zone, there would also be a adjacent land overlay. Next slide. Uh, so for D, this is for D fourteen dash fourteen dash twenty-one, so that's, this is the zoning by law amendment. These were the requested special provisions. The front and rear and side yard setbacks are establishing that building envelope that has been identified with the relevant studies that those applicants submitted. Um, and to permit a non-farm residential use on an existing lot of record is per official plan policies five point five point fifteen. Um. Of note, the reduction in the requirement of distance separation formula. Uh, staff presented a recommendation to West Perth Council that that not be granted on the basis that it wasn't um. There wasn't enough of a policy basis to have a reduction that small. So that um. Provision was not included with uh, what West Perth has proved of. So at this point in time. Uh, should this. O P A two oh four move forward. There's still, there won't be able for a house to go there today. Um, but it would basically pave the way, so if there was a change in status for the existing livestock facility that currently exists on the adjacent lands. Say it came down, or there was a change in use to a different type of livestock, or what have you. Um. The. Provisions would all be in place that the applicants could move forward and potentially build a house. Uh, so they wouldn't need to come back and get another official plan amendment, another zoning by law amendment. So planning staff are supporting uh, this application. Um. I do believe that the applicant has. Has uh, provided evidence that the aggregate designation isn't relevant anymore. And I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that council might have concerning this file.
Okay, questions or comments, Council Casper?
Just want to make sure I understand the minimum distance separation issue that is inherent. And how West Perth Council has interacted with planning on this one, so can you kind of walk me through uh, those pieces uh. A little more slowly, so I can get it.
Of course. Uh, yeah, so um. The minimum distance separation portion of this file has always kind of been a big part of it, just because there was in the beginning. Um. I shouldn't say discrepancies, there was um, some miscommunications over what type of livestock was in the barn. And we saw a shift in what those numbers. Um, I believe the initial numbers were for cattle, um, which was a mistake, there was never cattle in that barn. Um, and then the applicant submitted a new one with an unoccupied um. Livestock calculation. Um. But then with correspondence from the adjacent landowner. Found that the barn is actually has the capacity for swine, so that's why we have uh, the numbers of two eighty-five. For both the facility and for the manure storage that's beside it. Um. There. So there are. Um. There are circumstances where. Council may want to consider varying a minimum distance separation setback. In this circumstance, however, the reality is, is um. Even though the applicant was claiming that. The setback reduction was necessary because of the floodplain, reality is, is it doesn't. Regardless of the floodplain, there would have been no spot on the property where. House could have been constructed where M D S would have been met. Um, so staff, staff and. A lot of that too is also looking at whether or not there's going to be an adverse impact on the adjacent farm operation. And planning staff made the determination that, no, we, we haven't satisfied kind of the test that. A reduction is necessary in this circumstance. Does that make sense?
So there is a proposition here for a reduction.
No.
There's no proposition.
No, sorry.
Okay, I'll make sure I understand that.
I, I.
They ask for a reduction, and uh, it has been, at this point. Through the process and through the work of West Perth's council, not approved for a reduction. So you're holding to the minimum distance separation, and if I can ask, my colleagues from West Perth did part because. The, the adjacent lands could become viable and have opportunity to become viable, or is that sort of the way we're business?
Uh, through, through you, Warren. So the reality is, is that that barn, even if there isn't swine in it right now, they could move swine in it tomorrow. So that, that's kind of what we're looking at there. Um, I, I'm sorry for the confusion, so this isn't part, this was just part of the zoning by law amendment. It's not part of the official plan amendment. The only request that's being made for the official plan amendment is to change the designation off the aggregate. If that makes sense. I hope it does.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I guess the one question I have is um. When's the last time there was livestock in that barn? It's been a long, long time.
Um. It's been a couple, I believe it's been a couple of years. That original building permit was from nineteen ninety-five. It is an older barn for sure.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We have a motion that council receives the Perth County Official Plan Amendment. Number two oh four dash Bozen Report for Nancy described as part lot thirteen, concession thirteen. Part one, plan forty-four R dash three one six nine, three one one one, Perth Road, one sixty-three, Fullerton Ward. Municipality of West Perth and council approved. Perth County Official Plan number two oh four to change the aggregate designation for lands described as part. Lot thirteen, concession thirteen, part one, plan forty-four R dash. Three one six nine, three one one one, Perth Road, one sixty-three, Fullerton Ward, Municipality of West Perth. Agriculture and Natural Resource Lodge Environment. Mover and a seconder. By Council McDermott, second by Council Trunkowski, all those in favor. Carrie, and just before you go, I know this is your last council meeting, we thank you for everything that you've done for. Perth County, and we wish you all the best in your next endeavor. So, thanks again for being with us.
Thank you, Warren, and thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to uh, our next report, and that's a request for additional planning staff member, and. Andrea is here with us this morning, so. Morning Andrea, and welcome, and the floor is yours.
Morning, and thank you. So as, as uh, the warden pointed out, this uh, next agenda item is a request for additional planning staff. Generally, we would put the request in for the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, however, I'm coming to you earlier than the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, just because there's, we're finding that there's such a significant need. For an additional planning staff member, and this would be for a full-time permanent staff member. Uh, just to give council an idea, in case you're not aware. Currently have four development planners, and as the warden pointed out, uh, today is Jerika's last day, so we'll be down to three. Uh, we also have a contract planner that has been keeping us with the official plan review. However, she has indicated that she um, would like to move on and not extend her contract any further. Um. And then in addition to that, we have a senior planner and as well as our admin assistant. And we're finding that over time, there is an increase in applications, actually uh. The Watson presentation was quite hopeful for. For this presentation, as uh, as Eric pointed out, that there is a significant amount of growth that's occurring in Perth County. And it's anticipated to continue to grow, and so with that comes. Planning applications, uh, inquiries and pre consultations, and. I've included in my reports, uh, some of the numbers that we're, we're managing right now. Staff have, despite the fact that we've undergone a significant or consistent staffing changes over the past couple of years. Uh, we've been facing planning legislation changes. Um, and we will continue, we feel, to face those types of challenges. And we are, have been trying to react as quickly as possible. We are continuing to mostly meet our deadlines in terms of planning act legislation for getting applications before council and decisions we need. However, that tends to be at the cost of inquiries. Responding to inquiries in a timely and um, manner. As well as uh, scheduling through consultations, and so we feel that there is a bit of a bottleneck. Um, and then we are in the final leg. Of the official plan review, and so that has taken a considerable amount of staff time as well. I should point out too, by way of background, in twenty twenty-two, council. Did grant us um, another additional planner, so. Um, so we could have up to five planners in the office, and with that, Technology Services came to council. Um, later in June twenty twenty-two to request an additional uh, G I S position. So that was, and that was to keep up with, with the increasing demand with planning applications and, and whatnot. They also. Have taken an approach to, an all hands on deck approach to assisting us with the O P review. Um, as a stopgap measure, they extended um. They have a student right now that had, was supposed to be finished at uh, in the middle of August, and they extended his contract to November third. And uh, Technology Services will be putting in for the twenty twenty-four budget for an additional G I S person to continue to keep up. With, with the demand. Um. So for what we're looking at in terms of this year, in terms of financial implications. For the twenty twenty-three budget is a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred twenty-five. Dollars, and then for the twenty twenty-four budget, it would be um, a hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two. We feel that for the twenty twenty-three budget, we did budget for the climate action and stewardship coordinator position. For all of twenty twenty-three, however, council's aware, we haven't filled that position yet. Um, so there is, there is some, some. Leeway in the budget there. Um, and then also with the staffing changes, there's always. Um, there's been a few gaps this year as well, so we do feel that we can cover that, that sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, this year, and then it would be that asks for the, for increase to the twenty twenty-four budget. So with that, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, questions to the report, Council Casper?
Just quickly, um, Florence, of course, has made a number of changes, we've sort of seen them evolving during legislation and regulation. It feels like anyway, and I'm curious about whether any of that has reduced workload burden on the planning staff.
So through the warden to the question. I would say at this point, no. Um. Generally, what happens is when there's legislative changes, is it's a, it's a case of dropping what you're doing. To try to quickly react and figure out what those changes are, what they look like, and what the implications are. And then if changes need to be made to the official plan and zoning by law. Um, and so. I would say that it, that takes a considerable amount of, of focus away from the day-to-day. Um, we do have a planner that, a senior planner that is spending the majority of her time on policy with, like, has a policy focus. Um, and we're hoping that we can. Encompass most of those changes through the official plan review. But we do have some significant housekeeping amendments that should take place in zoning bylaws more urgently than. Waiting till the official plan reviews. So the short answer is, is.
Okay, another questions, comments, Council Aitchison?
I realize Andrew is very new, so I can't just say it's all her fault. Have we got the tracking system for planning applications implemented, so people can track where they're at, because my number one call to me is. Why the hell haven't I, pardon me, why haven't I heard anything? It was taking so long. I think people. Are expecting a quicker turnaround, which may increase if you have another planner. But we were, so I thought we're going to implement a tracking system where. You know, staff will be online, oh, this is exactly where it's at. We have that yet?
So through the word to the question, I believe you might be, the cloud permit. And the idea is that cloud permit is, has a. Like an outer-facing component to it, where the public or an applicant. Um, or myself as manager can monitor where all the applications are at. We do, um. Michelle does a great job of keeping spreadsheets that we can, can track things on, she's tracking all the inquiries. Um, and all the pre consultations, however, we have not taken on cloud permit yet. Um, I, in my former role, took on um. Was participating for the better part of a year with a working group, that's, that's um, it's different municipalities. That are working with cloud permit, and there's still some kinks. Um, and there's still a considerable amount, considerable amount of time that um, municipal staff are spending. Trying to get that program up and running and, and completely functional. So at this point, we haven't signed on cloud permit, uh, the technology services manager and myself are, are meeting with them. To um. To see what it would take for, for Perth County and each of the area municipalities to sign on with them. At this point, we don't have it, but that also will, will take a considerable amount of staff time to, to get it up and running.
Okay, and. Guess my second question is. There has been a significant turnover in planning staff. And I do realize that planners are in huge demand, I'm not getting your thought. We've had a couple files, of course, that's just kind of got lost in the shuffle between changeovers. And one was for James Street South, that could cost us a multi-million. So that was why I was kind of concerned about the tracks. But is there a reason that we're turning over so many people? I, I thought. Jerika was going to be a really up and coming for us, and all of a sudden. She's moved on to greener pasture. she's moved on to greener pastures. Like, I mean, I just, it's just a thought. I don't have as much insight into this as I used to, so I just ask them the questions now.
Through the warden to your question, it's true, planners are very, very challenging to find right now. There is consistent turnover with planners. The accounting directors, planning directors group and they were noting, we were going in in the group across the group, talking about how many vacancies we have and, and this party is actually doing pretty well. Relative to some of those, those other counties that, that are out there. I mean, one of the other things with, with this request to council is it's important that we try to maintain our planners and, and not burn them out. Because that is a, is a real concern across the board with, with municipal staff in general, but also like in particular planners, because it is, it is a very demanding job and it's you know, it's, it's outward facing. We're not always very popular. And so it's, it's important if we can kind of, you know, divide that, that workload out.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion that council receives requests for additional planning staff report for information and that council approves the request of the manager of planning to add full-time permanent planning position to the Planning and Development Division. Moved by council, Deputy Warden Callum, second by councilor, any more questions or comments? All in favor? Carrie, there you go. Okay, now we're going to move to economic development and we have with us this morning Ashley, Maggie and Justin. They're going to give a report on economic development tourism and transportation, so it's great to see all of you. Welcome. And the floor is yours, whoever wants to start.
Saying, thank you, through the warden, good morning county council. As a word of mention, we're talking to all this morning to provide our September edition of the economic development tourism and transportation bi monthly update. So I think we joined you last on, as a team on June fifteenth. And we're now excited to share an update on all that we've accomplished this summer. Following this update, we will also be starting our second biannual tour to all the lower, or sorry, the member municipalities, which will take place in the next few weeks, so we will be seeing you all again soon. So one of our first initiatives that we are very thrilled to report on was our free mystery farm hop tour. So on July eighth, our team in partnership with the PCFA and the OFA, we hosted a mystery farm hop event which provided our one hundred and forty-four participants with the unique opportunity to explore, explore four local farms and their operations. So our participants were welcomed aboard our PC Connect buses where they were chauffeured to farms and provided with a full itinerary that really immersed them into a fun and unique agricultural experience. They were able to engage with farm animals, sample local products and learn more about the agricultural operations that take place in their own backyards. Next slide please. So within twenty-four hours of organically launching our event, the mystery farm hop sold out and to our pleasure welcomed many diverse participants from different cultural backgrounds, ages and socio economical statuses. We're absolutely blown away by the response we received from participants such as the touching feedback shown on the screen in front of you this morning. Where Najma, a Perth County resident who was immigrated from India, shares the impact that the event had on our friends and family. Through further conversations with Najma, we are provided with a new lens to DEI initiatives. Najma emphasized her sincere appreciation for the farm hop as a diverse and inclusive event because rather than hosting a DEI event that celebrated their culture, the mystery farm hop created a space where they were welcomed into our Canadian culture with open arms, providing them with the lived experiences to relate to and share with other residents of Perth County, which really helped them to grow roots and create a sense of belonging. For example, her nephew now has the lived experience of visiting with visiting a farm and seeing and playing with farm animals to return to school with so that they can now relate to others in this class and bond over these agricultural experiences that are so profound in our community. Our goal was to host an inclusive event that really celebrated our agriculture with little to no barriers for participation, which is why it was free. However, the extent of our impact far exceeded our expectations. We're forever grateful for the communities that we had reached and learned from through our farm hop event and we look forward to hosting many more impactful, inclusive events in the future. And I'll pass it over to Justin to provide.
Thanks Maggie. So in terms of the economic development update, so I usually do start with an update on our Perth County Digital Service Squad, which is again in effect in March thirty first, twenty twenty four. So over the summer, we continued to reach out to businesses. Served over fifty businesses to date through our DSS program. Over the summer, we especially launched a campaign to, on radio and through Facebook ads to help promote the upcoming deadline for the digital transformation grant, the twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred dollar grant that businesses across Perth County are eligible for and really wanted to emphasize the upcoming deadline and our ability to support businesses to complete those applications, so today we've been able to support nine businesses to receive that twenty-five hundred dollar grant and continue to work with another eleven businesses to help them with the final stages of their application, hopefully get them all approved and are receiving those funds. We did also host for workshops across Perth County in Perth County libraries. Showcasing individual or highlighting individual aspects of our DSS service and how they can assist businesses, so again, just wanted to highlight this December thirtieth deadline for businesses interested in the DPG grant and please reach out to our digital service squad today if you are interested, we could help you get set up. So on the screen you'll see a preview of a, of a video from our bench, Canada Controls Business Tours. We had a very successful business tour season this summer, visiting five businesses across Perth County. We had over seventy-five stakeholder participants. So we, we've really used this as an opportunity to showcase both what businesses do, bring community partners in to showcase what supports exist for businesses. And through the videos, once we are able to launch them publicly to really showcase opportunities that exist for for students across Perth County, so I'm really thrilled that the participation has agreed on these five tours. And also look forward to sharing details with county council with the three upcoming tours that we have in the planning stages right now, so more to come on that, but again, a really great season of business tours so far. So one of the direct outcomes of the business tours was a need and a real desire to continue networking among various participants, so to that end, we've organized two upcoming networking sessions, we're titling them Business Industry and Education After Hours. Similar to how a chamber would have an after hours event, really informal setting invitations being extended to community partners, business support organizations through the school, co-op teachers and stuff like that to really help bring together and foster relationships that may have been lost during the pandemic. We also know many of the larger companies and businesses in Perth County have new senior leadership teams. So really, these are opportunities to help bring those groups together to help create those networks, you know, find opportunities for student swaps, things like that, so I encourage you to mark your calendars to attend one night in Mitchell and then also in Listowel or the fourth. Kind of following in on our business expansion expansion efforts, our, our business expansion expansion survey, so in the next couple weeks, you'll be seeing these these packages hitting mailboxes of all businesses and farm locations across Perth County through Canada Post neighborhood mail system. The surveys are, included with the surveys are a business reply envelope to help businesses take the paper survey and mail it in without having to, you know, go get a stamp, make it extremely easy. It's a short ten to fifteen minute survey and I just wanted to highlight the survey is much different than other surveys, you know, other surveys done in the past or other employer surveys out there which are more kind of small samples to gain a larger perspective on what's going on in Perth County. These are really focused on identifying individual business needs. Whether it be expansion plans, relocation plans, workforce needs, funding needs, interest in a business tour, all those kind of individual business questions, we can really start a conversation with our team and then bring forward other resources that would be local community partners, municipalities to really help address those needs. So again, not a, not a survey for survey sake or kind of a broader macroeconomic survey, but really focused on individual business needs to help us as a county address those needs. And Sarah, I should also mention that the survey is also available online. There's some social media posts that have gone out about the survey as well as paper surveys will have a QR code where people can scan and do the survey online as well, so. Next slide please. And then finally for me, I'll just touch up quickly on our workforce tracking and retention employer toolkit, which we launched at the beginning of summer. So far today, we've had seventy registered users from across Perth County, so businesses, organizations who have access to toolkit, downloaded some tools and taking advantage of that. Also, we've had lots of interest from other municipalities across Ontario who are interested in kind of adopting a similar toolkit or utilizing ours with their employers, so we've had them register and we've also been asked to speak at two upcoming conferences. One is the Ministry of Air, Culture, Food, Rural Affairs Community Practice and also at the Ontario Workforce Development Conference in October, so lots of positive feedback on this project so far, lots of interest from other communities and look forward to continue to share and build the toolkit for our Perth County businesses going forward. So I think that's it for me and I will pass things over to you, Ashlyn.
Thanks. So as you'll read in your update, Perth County's experiential tourism program is up to fourteen active signature experiences, three of which were newly launched throughout this summer. So those new additions include high tea at Victorian Inn and Spa in Listwell, a bonbon making workshop at Chop Fine Chocolates in Shakespeare and a build your own bouquet offering at Black Creek Flower Farm in Sebringville. The growth of this program is a great testament to just how much there is to experience in Perth County and is a key element in our efforts to increase the number of visitors coming to our rural region each year. In the same spirit, our Discover More Flavor Farmgate map has grown to eighty-five participating farm locations, all of which are promoted through our updated digital Farmgate map, themed Farmgate itinerary adventures, new roadside signage, social media coverage and beyond. Next slide please. It was a busy summer engaging with Perth County destinations and tourism operators with over one hundred and fourteen visits to businesses across the county to distribute promotional material, collect marketing content, hear from business owners and more. To date, we have distributed over three thousand two hundred copies of the Stratford Perth County and Saint Mary's cycle route map that launched this spring. This map has proved to be very popular with many cyclists requesting copies of the hard copy map. To encourage use of the digital cycle route map assets, we've enhanced all of our signature route ride with GPS maps to include stops along the way. These are also available in printable itinerary style PDFs on our website. These efforts, in addition to benches and bike repair stations we're having installed in the G two G rail trail, fall under key direction number three to locate add amenities, services and signage for cyclists and key direction number four to increase the promotion of cycle tourism in Perth County from Perth County's cycle tourism strategy. Next slide please. As the destination marketing organization for Perth County, we continue to market Perth County as a top travel destination in Ontario. We do this through a wide variety of marketing channels throughout the year with notable efforts throughout the summer, including widespread coverage on the Ontario culinary website. I think we had seven blogs go up on there this year. We had a feature in CBC London's Summer Road Trip Series, distribution of tourism promotional posters throughout the region and substantial coverage in the Globe and Mail's Explore Ontario Summer Edition insert. Website enhancements have also been done on our own site, including the development of a brand new bakery trail that features twelve Perth County businesses. Social media marketing has proven to be a very effective way to attract visitors and to promote Perth County's rural tourism destinations. The tourism social media channels saw substantial growth in our following reach and engagement throughout summer twenty twenty three. In addition to our own in-house content creation, these increases are also owed to strategic influencer partnerships. Staff have received very positive feedback on the ROI from featured Perth County businesses and destinations on these trips. To provide some context, from May nineteenth to August twenty first, the Perth County Tourism Instagram page was viewed by approximately thirty-four thousand different users. Approximately thirty-one thousand of these users were not already following our page, meaning that new audiences were seeing our tourism assets online. The benefits of new accounts engaging with this content has extended beyond passive viewing as we see these accounts are actively interacting with the content, leading to a significant increase in link clicks since the beginning of summer twenty twenty three. These links guide users to explore our signature experiences, farm gate destinations, cycle routes and more, indicating a higher level of genuine interest and potential for conversions. This sunflower video you'll see on the screen is a really great example of this. This video was created in partnership with Curated KW, who are digital creators with pages on Instagram and TikTok. This video that they created at Cadillac Sunflower Field in Atwood has received over three hundred and fifty-four thousand views. This year, the owner of the destination asked each guest where they heard about her sunflower field walk and she reported more visitors than not had heard about it through this video. So that proves the impact strategic social media marketing can have on our local business community. With that, I will pass things back over to Maggie.
Awesome, thanks Ashley. Next slide please. So in terms of PC Connect, the PC Connect service continues to grow in terms of reach and ridership, really alleviating the transportation barriers that previously stood in between our residents getting to work, healthcare, education, social services, visiting friends and family and so much more. Since launched, PC Connect has serviced over twenty-four thousand rides and in the last twelve months, ridership has grown by a hundred and five percent compared to the previous twelve months. We're certainly happy about this ridership trend that we are seeing here. So in order to contribute to the continuous growth, this past Tuesday, we did implement significant route enhancements which included the termination of Route B and the introduction of increased frequency on Route A. So we've actually rebranded Route A to become the rural route, which now operates continuously from six AM to seven fifteen PM, Monday to Friday, making the service even more convenient and appealing for riders to leverage, especially to get to work. In addition to these two changes, sorry, these new changes, two new stops are also launched on Route One which are located in Dorking and Walstein. So actually in July, we implemented a stop at Country Sisters along Highway eighty-six and we saw an increase in ridership of over a hundred rides that month on that route. So we're certainly looking forward to seeing an increase in ridership following these additional two stops as well. Our new service changes have been heavily advertised through a series of channels in a multimedia marketing campaign such as social media, app notifications, newsletters, posters, radio ads and interviews, newspapers, the shop opportunities, community, community connections, quadronaut channel one, digital screens, it's been everywhere. So we're really excited to see all of this impacts on ridership moving forward. The changes have been very well received so far, which is a positive. And again, we'll look forward to closely monitoring that ridership within the next few months. When updating our printed ride guides to reflect our new schedules, we also took it as the opportunity to simplify and enhance our schedule formatting. So our PC Connect schedules can now be read laterally as opposed to our previous up and down schedule, which makes it much easier for residents to find their departure times from their desired bus stop locations, which is shown on the screen. Additionally, on June seventh, we launched our partnership with the PCIN to offer free library bus passes. And since launched, which is just under three months ago, a total of five hundred and fifty-one rides have been completed with the library bus passes. So we're extremely pleased with the success of this program, which has proven to really further alleviate the barriers that residents face for leveraging public transportation in our communities. As the library passes were launched as a pilot project on a trial basis, we are working closely with our stakeholders to evaluate the model and implement the necessary enhancements required to offer sustainable, long-term products such as passes. Next slide please. As I have previously reported on, we have been working hard on a new marketing campaign that highlights the story of our riders and how they leverage PC Connect in their everyday lives. So the purpose of this campaign is to encourage riders to try PC Connect as well as emphasize the demand of the service and the and use these moving real life stories to help advocate for additional long-term funding. So the People of PC Connect campaign will be launching this fall and we do have a quick sneak peek available this morning to shoot. So the People of PC Connect campaign will be launching this fall, and we do have a quick sneak peek available this morning to shoot to you.
Getting to class used to be a daily struggle for me, but then I found out about PC Connect. My ride to a better future. No more long walks. No more missed buses. With PC Connect, my journey is my study time. PC Connect isn't just a bus line. It's my path to education, my ride to success.
So the series will also include storylines around healthcare, employment, and then, and connecting riders to family and friends. And we're extremely excited to be able to tell the stories of our riders on behalf of our riders, um, in hopes to continue operating the PC Connect service in the long term. Um, so just my final point to report on is an update on funding. So on August tenth, we received communication from the Community Transportation Team that there is the opportunity to request additional funding to support our project to the end of the pilot project, which is March of twenty twenty-five. The stipulation of this request is that priority will be given to those who pass the council resolution, committing them to long-term, sustainable contributions to the project. So since receiving the letter, we have met with the CT team and other recipients to further understand the request process and the stipulations that are required. So our funding requests, um, would be approximately two hundred thousand dollars to fund our project, our projected deficit. However, as I mentioned, priority will be given to councils who are willing to submit a council resolution committing to long-term, ongoing funding of the CT-funded project beyond March thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So given our current operating expenses, our projected annual operating costs beyond twenty twenty-five are approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year. So our request for additional funding must be submitted by September twenty-ninth. Um, and in this request, we must declare whether council is willing to submit a resolution. Um, so a report seeking direction, um, and that includes more information, will be brought forward to the next council meeting, um, in a few weeks. And so, next slide, please. With that, our bi-monthly update report is before you, and we welcome any questions that council may have for us this morning.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Counselor McDermott?
Uh, through the warden, uh, Ashley, those numbers are really impressive. Um, were they beyond what you would thought that you would get? Were they, like, would you have a level what you would hope to get, and then this was well beyond that level?
For our social media analytics meeting? Sure. So through the warden, I'd say what we always try to do is better than we did the year before. So we've continued to do that since tourism launched in twenty seventeen is try to, last August, we had so many followers and engagement and reach. This August, we'll try to do better than that. And I will say twenty twenty-three was the biggest increase we've seen so far since, uh, tourism joined the county. Um, I think a lot of that has to do with dedicating a lot more time to putting out really high-quality content and investing in influencer marketing that really makes sense for target markets. So we're developing partnerships with people who are targeting the same audiences that we are building experiences and destinations to attract. So I think, I, I'm happy with the numbers. They're better than we've had before, and it, it's, I think, a testament to the efforts in programming, kind of aligning with the right target markets.
Congratulations.
Okay, Counselor McKenzie?
Oh, very good reports. Bring us up to speed. I just have one concern. The, um, the poor lady, or girl that was in Sunflower Field there, did she ever find her way out? Because it looked like she was...
I think she made her way out.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I don't know.
I thi- I think your enthusiasm in your department brings, like, the ideas that you've come up with just flog of my mind, but it, it just brings more people and more people, and you know, and that's what we need in Perth County. The more people we have coming, the more that want to stay here, the more want to live here, the more want to work here. And that's, you know, that's our goal. And so, yeah, thank you for, for what you do. So. If there's nothing else, we have a motion that council receives economic development, tourism, and transportation September twenty twenty-three update reports. Move by Counselor Hson, second by Counselor McKenzie. All those in favor, carried. Okay, we've been at this for an hour and a half. I think we're going to take a quick break before we get into the next one, Corporate Services, and so we'll come back at ten forty-five. Okay, so now we're going to move to Corporate Services, and, um, first thing on our agenda is the Forestry Inspector's Report, and Tyler, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden. And through you to council, the fore- council is the July twenty twenty-three Forestry Inspector's Report, uh, presented by myself, for Marvin Smith, the, uh, Forestry Inspector for Perth County. Marvin completed five inspections in response to submission of a notice of intent, or NOI, and one inspection in response to a question from a landowner. There's any questions, I'd be happy to pass those on to Marvin. Thank you.
Okay, is there any questions on the report? Seeing no questions, we have a motion that council receives a July twenty twenty-three Forestry Inspector's Report for information. Moved by Counselor Passenberg, second by Counselor Smith. All those in favor, carried. Okay, next report is the Local Newspaper Digitalization Project Update, and we have Betty Jo with us this morning, so. And Jennifer, she's coming too. Great. Morning, ladies, and welcome, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, council and everyone. Um, I'm here to do a quick introduction to our report today, and then I will turn things over to the expert to walk you through some of the details. So the Archives has a large collection of local newspapers that are heavily used by the public, uh, to understand the history of our area, families, homes, businesses, and communities. So when Jen, Georgie, the expert, uh, began working for the county as an Archives technician in June of twenty twenty-one, she started exploring ways to make these newspapers readily available to researchers. Um, and by September, she was testing the best way to digitize them, and she produced a detailed manual for the summer students who we hoped would come on board in twenty twenty-two and again this year. Um, so these are our summer students this year, and, um, they essentially, uh, partner and tag team back and forth between running the reading rooms, uh, for us over the summer and providing access for drop-in service on Saturdays and digitizing. So for that, um, I will... No, um, good morning, council and Warden. Um, so with these summer, summer students, as for here, um, for the last two years, Stratford, Perth Archives has scanned over six thousand, I think, of the local newspapers, um, from both paper and microfilm copy. Um, the scanning process creates an electronic document, which is fully searchable. Um, some of these papers include, um, early originals such as the Milverton Sun, excellent, um, microfilm scans such as the Listwell Standard, slide, and original hard copies like the Stratford Gazette. Back slide. So far, we have scanned six local newspapers from all over the county while testing various formats and encountering numerous, um, qualities of paper. The numbers, um, for, or the dates here for Milverton and Listwell papers have been updated from what is in your report, just like tallied at the end of the summer students' scanning. Next slide, please. Um, to date, we have scanned six thousand eight hundred and eleven newspapers. Numbers on the slide have been updated from what is in the submitted report, um, like all the work done this summer by our students. Next slide. Um, but we still have a lot of work to do. So these are a selection of some of the papers in our collection we have not yet scanned. I was trying to just get papers from other areas of the county, um, first. Next slide. We have done a lot of, oh, sorry. Our goal is to make digital newspapers widely available to the public. The Not-for-Profit Group, ROntario, has a website for digital collections from many different sources and is free for researchers. Excellent. Earlier this year, the Perth County branch of the Ontario Geological Society donated ten thousand dollars to the Archives to create an online newspaper database for our local papers. The generous donation will allow the Archives to pilot ROntario's website to host the digital copies of the newspapers and fully assess its capabilities and level of satisfaction for researchers. Excellent. Okay, so thanks, Jen. Um, we wanted to bring council to the report today, just to update you, uh, on what, on this project and get your approval, of course, to bring it before MSSC in two weeks. Um, and we're also asking for your approval to use a portion of the OGS, uh, donation that was set aside in Archives General Reserve when it arrived, uh, this year, so it wasn't in the twenty twenty-three budget, and we're asking for, um, permission to use enough to pay for a one-year subscription to ROntario. And since this would be an unbudge- unbudgeted expense for this year, um, it will become part of the usual budget process, uh, as of twenty twenty-four. So thank you for your time this morning, and of course, if you have any questions, Jennifer, I'll answer.
Okay, questions or comments of the report? Oh, it's really neat to see those old newspapers. That's cool. I see them come back, so. Thank you for what you do, and here we have a motion that council receives a local newspaper digitalization project update from Stratford Perth Archives report, and that council approves allocation of up to two thousand dollars from Archives General Reserve for an unbudgeted expense in twenty twenty-three to purchase a one-year subscription to our digital world slash R-R Ontario to make electronic copies of certain newspapers from Stratford Perth Archives available online, and that council approves the report for submission to the MSSC meeting of September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Moving on to secondary, moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor McDermott. All those in favor, carried. Great. Thank you. Uh, next, we're going to Temporary Borrowing by Law Courthouse Campus Renovation, and Cory is going to do that, so. Morning Cory, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Morning, Warden Aggittson, council. Um, Perth County has begun the construction phase of the courthouse campus, and, uh, based on that, we require some temporary borrowing, essentially a construction loan, uh, to draw on during the construction process. Uh, the estimated cost of this project is five point four million dollars, and we have an application in with Infrastructure Ontario to, uh, to do the construction loan. And essentially after this, we'll be converting it into a long-term debenture, uh, for, uh, setting a interest rate and, uh, payment terms after the fact. Um, uh, within the report, you'll notice that, uh, there's an updated, uh, uh, annual payment limit with, with, uh, what the county is. Uh, as, uh, we can borrow up to twenty-five percent of our own source revenues, and utilizing this and getting to the part where the debenture is will be about five point three three percent of that twenty-five percent total. Uh, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions, comments? Oh, okay, council receives a twenty twenty-three Temporary Borrowing by Law Courthouse Campus Renovation Report. Moved by Counselor Smith, second by Counselor McDermott. All those in favor, carried. And Cory?
Thanks, Warden.
We're going to...
Quick question.
Oh, sure.
Cory takes off. Is it usually about this time of the year we get our insurance renewal? There's been a lot of comments lately from, uh, other municipalities about insurance costs and et cetera. Have we got that yet?
We do not. Uh, there's a report coming at next council in relation to the, uh, moving forward with, uh, a provider. Um, but that report is coming on the September twenty-first.
Okay. All right, we will move on then to our PA OA Court Services Report, and we have Vicky with us on the screen. Good morning, Vicky, and welcome, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, Warden Aggittson, members of council. This report provides an update on activities at the Provincial Offenses Court Services Office to the end of July twenty twenty-three. I am seeking council's approval so that this report can be given to municipal shared services. Court Services staff continue to schedule early resolution meetings and trials. Our staff is currently scheduling cases that are about one month old, and staff is booking these cases into late November and early December. Due to lack of judicial resources, there have been three last-minute court closures. When there's no justice of the peace, the only option is an adjournment. On these three court closure dates, there were a total of three hundred and fifty-eight counts that had to be adjourned to court dates which are already quite full. Since these cases could not be dealt with in court, this has increased the pending caseload significantly. An incident report for each of these closures has been submitted to the Ministry of the Attorney General. Perth County staff has met with the Crown Attorney's Office in April and June of twenty twenty-three regarding the potential download of the prosecution of Part Three offenses. Part Three charges are more serious offenses and court appearances are mandatory. I approx, um, sorry, I have estimated that the download would increase our prosecution costs by approximately thirty-three thousand dollars per year for the same level of service. Revenue from Part Three convictions is already included in the provincial offenses revenue that is distributed to the municipal partners. Since this download is not mandatory, the Crown Attorney's Office has been notified that the download will be delayed until it becomes necessary. I have provided you with tables comparing the last, this year to the last five years to the end of the month of July. The pending average monthly caseload and our court appearance tables speak to the increase in court activity and increased workload for staff due to the lack of judicial resources. The table below shows the court appearances to the end of July. The following table shows a comparison of the last six years for charges filed. The table below shows the fines collected to the end of the, the July for each year. The district, the distribution of revenue has been calculated based on actual fines paid and the location of each offense. That concludes my report. Uh, please let me know if there are any questions.
Okay, thanks, Vicky. Any questions or comments of the report? Hmm. None. We have a motion that council receives a POA Court Services Report for MSSC and operational update, oh, excuse me, report for information, and that council approves the report for submission to the Municipal Shared Services Committee meeting of September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Deputy Warden Callum, second by Counselor McKenzie. All those in favor, carried. Thanks, Vicky. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to Corporate Services. We have an update, and we have Annette doing that. Morning, Annette.
Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you again, albeit virtually. Uh, this report provides an overview for the activities in Corporate Services for the month of July. So, um, yes, we're going back to the month of July, which seems so long ago. Uh, I'm just gonna note a few things briefly. You've already heard from, uh, from POA with respect to the court closures. Um, so we'll, we'll move on from that. Uh, our Xerox machines, the deployment of those new machines has begun throughout the... So we'll, we'll move on from that. Uh, our Xerox machines, the deployment of those new machines has begun throughout the county facilities. So yay, we have some new machines. Um, archives technicians and summer students, they have completed their third annual collections room inspection and cleaning. They did that in July. Um, what that entailed was approximately eight hundred and fifty boxes were randomly chosen and inspected for things such as mold. Um, and pest infestation and I'm highlighting this because it really does show. Archives commitment to ensuring the county's collections are properly preserved, that they're stored and that they are protected. Uh, for finance, the audit is continuing as, as our preparations for the twenty twenty-four budget. As um, as you heard earlier, the report with regards to insurance coverage is coming next meeting. And looking forward, the cultivating opportunity grant, the um, applications have opened. Effective September first, applications can be found on the website or in alternative format if requested. Legislative Services is also working with West Perth staff to fill a vacant seat on the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. And staff throughout corporate services are, um, actually throughout the corporation are working hard to support the um, the renovations that are happening at the courthouse campus. So Legislative Services is preparing to relocate reception. Um, Archives has welcomed the transfer of multiple boxes, hundreds of boxes containing corporate records. And I T has been working very closely with facilities to ensure that staff are able to relocate and as well to create a plan with respect to power and data. So, subject to any questions, that's uh, just a brief overview, a few highlights from the report contained within the materials.
Hey, is any question or comment of the report? Being none, we have a motion that council receives the Corporate Services Try Twenty Twenty-three Report for Information. Moved by. Sir Heskey, second by councillor McDermott, in favor. Gary. Okay, we're going to move on to paramedic services and it's our municipal shared services committee. And our twenty-three mid-year report and Mike is with us this morning, so good morning, Mike, and the floor is yours.
Hope to have Deputy Keizer come up with me today as well.
Sure, great.
So through the warden, thank you. Uh, this is our MSSC report. It's also our bi-annual paramedic service uh, update. In terms of uh, some of the key performance indicators, so. Um, I asked Deputy Keizer to come in today because I want to thank him for all the work he does. And he is the uh, engine that's behind this report that does a lot of calculations and stuff, so he worked hard at not providing this for, for us. So he's here both to ask our questions if we have any, um, uh, but also I, I wanted to thank him today. So on this report, uh, this is, uh, like I said, this is our uh, bi-annual report, um, and I'll just walk through it as I do usually. And the first page, I talks about our call volumes and you'll notice that um, we are on par of what we're expecting to. Do this year over eleven thousand calls in the county. Um, our code eight, which is our standby, is a movement. We implemented some changes to our deployment plan. Uh, partway through um, this year and we've noticed that we're having less movements by ambulances, so things are working. Um, and then uh, our next page, we talk about our. Response times and again, I've, I've, I've spoken and I do a report annually on this as well because we have to report to the ministry. And so this is our mid-year report, it's not our final. You'll notice that for sudden cardiac arrest. We're meeting our targets thirty-six percent of the time and C test two or ones fifty-seven percent of the time. Uh, C test two is eighty-two, C test three is ninety-two, C test four is ninety-seven and C test five is ninety-six. And as I've said in the past, it's difficult to measure a system where. We're dispatched just with licensed sirens or without licensed sirens and then we come in contact with a patient and um. Um, it's hard to prioritize ambulance to go to those calls. Other challenges in municipality with both rural and urban mixes, how long. Um, it takes to respond to a particular type of calls. And then finally, our sample size is rather small, fortunately for sudden cardiac arrest. For example, uh, to this point this year, we've had uh, to the point that I pulled the data, we've had twenty-five cardiac arrests that we responded to that, um. We would be transporting that patient as, as, as uh, to the hospital, so. Um, those small sample sizes means that we are going to see swings up and down um, in the data. Um, I did add uh, in this report, which is new mid-year averages, uh, so our software, our um. Patient care report actually can generate our averages and so we looked at the averages in terms of what response times each of those categories are to just provide council some more context to. What we're dealing with here. Um. The final uh, piece to that is, uh, we had committed to last year also investigating and reviewing any cases that were not meeting sudden cardiac arrest or C test one. Um, uh, cases to make sure that we are doing the right things and that program continues to uh, take place and. We look at that um, in chunks of time, so we've half a year of data right now that we've reviewed and we follow up with uh, paramedics if, if required. A hospital bed transfer time and delay to transfer of the hospital bedtime, so. Uh, we're changing the, the, the cheese of Ontario, I've changed the title about a little bit, uh, because. Offload delay, um, it's really about transfer to the uh, patient care to, to a bed, that's uh, probably makes more sense to use that terminology. Um, we are seeing, um, uh, you know, in twenty twenty-three, uh, forecasted, we see. Um, that we're very similar to twenty twenty-two, maybe a slight increase. Um, and then I break it down into any time that we spend over half an hour. In the, in the hospital, so the time we spend over the half an hour, we expect that each time we go into a hospital, it's going to take half an hour to get in there. Triage, transfer the patient and then leave the hospital. It's going to take about half an hour and that's reasonable amount of time. So anytime we spend over that half an hour time, we track and we track it as full of our ambulance shifts, so I have a look at that. Um, meaning how many shifts have we lost in a hospital? And uh, twenty twenty-three is half a dataset and twenty twenty-two is a full dataset in this graph. So you can see that we're um, pretty much at par uh, to where we were last year. Uh, maybe a little bit ahead in terms of just a little bit more uh, time off. Volumes are going up, so there's not a significant change. Then we ask ourselves, what are we going to do about that? And so a few things have been ongoing, but new to this report, um. Uh, this was, this was pending before and so we've implemented, um, we are working on escalation policy so that. If we ever get to the situation where a whole bunch of ambulances are stuck in a hospital and uh, you know, say Stratford General and. We need to get out to service calls, uh, what are we going to do about that? So we're working on a policy, um, and we'll be working with the hospital to. Make sure that we have uh, something that's in place just in case it creeps up on us. We haven't had that situation before where we haven't been able to manage that, but we do want to get ahead of the. Um, apple cart on that one. And then the other one is um. Uh, is also assess the need for criteria for uh, application to offload funding, so. Um, certain ambulance services across province where hospitals are not performing at the level they should be. Are, uh, can apply to the ministry for funding to put a nurse in the emergency department to take care of patients that ambulance services are dropping. Patients off for, so I do have a meeting booked with our hospital, our, our local hospital C E O. And we're going to um, have a discussion whether that's something that we might want to look at for this year and applications typically occur in either. Late the actual year, so like November, December or early next year, so we'll see if we. If it's worth actually applying for, so we'll look at some data behind that. Our reaction time is uh, something that we've monitored uh, for several years and so that's how long does it take for a paramedic to respond to a call? And our threshold is two minutes from the time the pager goes off to the time that they're actually. Out the door and heading to the call, so we are still, we, we maintain under that two minutes. And uh, I have left a note in there that we consider moving that down to one minute and forty-five seconds, but. Uh, there are some stations that uh, it will take a little bit longer than others um, to do and so we've left it two minutes for now and uh. We continue to maintain that reaction time. Patient chart audits last year, uh, we were, we completed the number that we said we were going to complete. But we did see a decrease over the two years prior to um, of. Numbers of audits that we were completing and so this year we've almost surpassed uh, what we did last year. And one of the uh, differences is that we did, last year we did some training with our frontline commanders. On audits and we continue to work with them in this year as well, so we're looking at doing quality audits. Um, and uh, just making sure that we're all on the same page, kind of like a calibration, if you will. Of looking at patient care records so that we're all doing things the same way, so. Uh, we would expect that that was going to slow down a little bit last year and this year we're already um, recuperating and moving forward, so that's good news. Uh, COVID, uh, COVID screens, um. Just, I've been monitoring that and putting that in there for council so that you're aware of how COVID is impacting the service and. Certainly it's down this year, August isn't a complete dataset, but we are seeing less COVID-related type of calls than we have in the past couple of years, which we would expect. Although that might change according to the news. Um. And then uh, finally, our mobile integrated health updates in there, we talked, I talked a little bit about the social services um. Uh, partnership, uh, which is ongoing. Uh, one thing that is notable for council is that uh, we have implemented a remote patient care monitoring uh, platform, so that enables us to. Um, monitor the vitals of patients within their homes, so we don't even have to necessarily visit them. And if something is not right, then we can either refer them to their physician or we can actually go and have a visit with those uh. With those clients so that they're better served. Uh, in terms of vehicles, two new ambulances are here, they're up and running. Uh, our supervisor truck is here and it's being, uh, we're just waiting for an organization that um. Uh, will be retrofitting it to have the capacity to do that, but um, it's in progress. And um, then from an educational and recruitment partnership, um, we are welcoming students this fall. And uh, we're, um, there was actually just a media article that went out yesterday uh, that was talking about that, so uh, we're going to a job fair. Uh, on the sixteenth or seventeenth, I believe, of, of September and we'll be spending some time with uh. Uh, students that are current that might be looking for jobs at particular ambulance services. Um, training us. Stratford, we, doesn't work with Stratford uh, Fire Department. This fall, we will be doing uh, mental health uh, training with our paramedics. Um, and uh, yeah, and we'll go on from there. Um, labor relations, uh, council is where we sent a note out, uh. But it is public now that the Teamsters have decertified, so. Our commanders, our supervisors, uh, had a union that they had brought in. A few years going back to around twenty nineteen and uh, that has now, um, they, uh, certain members of that union. Um, brought forward, it's not a motion, but brought forward an application to decertify through the Ontario Labor Board and subsequently they have decertified. And uh, so moving forward, we'll talk a little bit about that closed in terms of the labor implications, but uh, moving forward, it's business as usual and uh, they will be. Um, expected to act as managers and supervisors at this point in time. Um, with Medibee Health Services, um, we're, we're onboarding First Watch, I've talked about that in the past, First Watch is a business analytic tool. For paramedic and public health services and other emergency services, so we're real excited about that, but. Um, we're in the process of uh, doing our privacy impact assessment with um, our I T department and so we should be moving that forward. Uh, shortly and we're looking also at a cooperative purchasing agreement with um. Um, Medibee Health Services through their uh, preferred uh, medical vendor Cardinal Health and more on that upcoming on the twenty-first um, of September. And that's my report, so. If there's any questions, I hand it back over to the ward. And Chris and I are both here.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions or comments? Councillor Or.
Uh, great report. Uh, just wondering with the training and collaboration update, do we ever collaborate with our own? Bill and Milverton in that?
In the uh, in the other fire services other than Stratford?
Yes.
Um, I know that we, and Chris can speak to the history of that, I know that we have in the past, um, but we haven't recently. Chris, do you have any?
Historically, we would orientate the volunteer departments to the ambulance and equipment and structures and things like that, uh, since a lot of automation has gone on, we've got, and COVID actually put a stop to a lot of that. Um, but that is something we have historically done in the past. I can't think of anyone who's reached that recently. Uh, but any opportunity that we have to be ace with any of the fire departments, we usually do, whether it be um. Through providing them education or us education, Stratford Fire Department being a full-time service, they had a chance to do some high-angle rescue. Um, work and that was where we got involved just recently.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Okay, councillor Heskey.
Um, I couldn't notice a motion for a possibleizing, I didn't give it all right. There's a meeting coming up, I believe, this early next week.
Monday.
On a strategic update. Did EMS get invited to that? I know it was mayor's and C E O has been, just thinking here, God, maybe the EMS pick one, part of that.
Uh, through the word and I'd have to see what the invitation is and uh, but I, it's the best of my knowledge, we have uh, not had a. Particular invitation.
I believe.
I believe it's Monday morning.
At ten or.
Ten AM, there's a Zoom meeting. I don't have it written on this calendar, but on a calendar at home, but yeah. I can send you that email so you see what it's.
Sure, that would, thank you, Warren.
See what it, see what it's about.
Do that and I can always take it offline and respond uh, to everyone. I know that Chris sits on the E R um, council. As well, the emergency department, so we do have um. Obviously, current like, like interactions with hospital time, but in, in, in particular to that invitation, I'm not aware of it.
Okay, anything else? Great report. Um, I just, I want to point out about the uh, decertifying of the union, that's very rare. And that's a testament to leadership, so we thank you for, for all you do. And to see, so. Thanks on behalf of council. So we do have a motion that the Perth County Council receives a Municipal Shared Services Committee, Perth Paramedic Services Twenty Twenty-three Midyear Report. For information and a council approved the Municipal Shared Services Committee, Perth Paramedic Services Twenty Twenty-three Midyear Report. For submission to the twenty, to the September twenty-one, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Municipal Shared Services Committee. By councillor Smith, second by councillor Trankowski, all those in favor. Carrie. Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Okay, the next report, it's something new. Uh, this is the warden's activity and so the next time you get it, it's not going to be six months, you'll probably get it a month at a time. But it just gives you an idea where I've been, what I've been doing. And uh, if there's any questions on any of the places I've been or who I've met with. Fire away. If there's no questions, then we'll have a motion that council receives the warden activity report, December twenty. Twenty-two to July twenty twenty-three, report for information, moved by Deputy Ward Callum, second by councillor Or, all in favor. Eric. Okay, we have two bylaws. First one is uh, thirty-nine forty dash twenty twenty-three, bylaw to be read a first, second, third time. And finally passes seventh day of September twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Dermott, all in favor. Carried. Next bylaw is uh, O P A two oh four, the Bozen. It's by law thirty-nine forty-one dash twenty twenty-three to be read a first, second, third time and finally passes seventh day of September twenty twenty-three. Moved by. Councillor Duncan, second by councillor Heskey, all in favor. Harry. Do we have any notice of motions? Other business?
Announcements. Oh, councillor Or, just wanted to mention, uh, seems to be a lot more coyote problem in Perth South. Um, so I'm wondering if the other municipalities have the same type of issue and if we should look. Into that. One of our councillors lost a dog. Uh, very traumatic. Um, and it has been noted that we've lost a few of our Amish farmers who used to hunt coyotes and um, our population is exploding there, so. Just bringing it to attention if anybody has any suggestions. I'd like to hear about them.
Councillor Heskey.
Heard that, yeah, I was actually going to bring that up as well, um. I've had all kinds of calls for coyotes that have been in guns, that's. Oh, a small animal, like a calf, whatever. Time to go through, through the process, compensate, sorry, it works, it's just saying. You know, hear about it. And, but, I guess the comment, last comment I got from somebody said this has to be a child before you do anything about it. I said, I'll bring it up. I know there are some areas that have a bounty run. And the coyote population wasn't completely horrible until the last couple, three, four years, it's really bad. Well, I think your husband hunts coyote.
Yeah, so we're very fortunate in our area, there's a group of hunters every winter hunt and they get fifty to sixty every winter.
Yeah, yeah, well, that'd be a pretty easy go out early.
So, I'm not sure. The bounty process is. Time-consuming to get it, right?
Well, I think it is, but I just, something's got to get done to kind of start to. Change the cycle here. I guess is the word I'll use.
Maybe Matt, councillor Doug, put more insight.
Definitely give you some insight on, on the, it's actually called the Coyote Compensation Program and it's only applicable if there's livestock killed. That's all the way the problem is. That's the only way the province will let any money flow if there's a livestock kill. Yeah, I mean, we would, we would have to institute the process here at the county level to to allow that to, to happen.
Okay, one time, did not your county have a bounty?
Here on Gray and Bruce currently all have the Coyote Compensation Program.
Good thought.
Yeah, it is, it is a, it is a serious, uh, concern because it is going on. Sir, do we need, just, do you need a motion or a direction?
Yeah, absolutely. We can, we can look into it and we can take a listen.
Okay.
It's a nice second.
All favor?
Listen, somebody else wants to. Totally. To get out of, I guess, ruining it.
Okay, uh, announcements? Counselor Smith?
Yeah, um, so some fire department talk. So Sunday, the Sunday, the September tenth, the Perth County Mutual Aid um, Association's host, uh, having their well, annual, have had for a couple of years, Water Games. Well, it's at the, um, Amaloga Rec Complex in Moncton. I think it starts at eleven, so everyone's welcome. There's food trucks and there's, uh, I've got a handful of teams coming from Perth County. So that's something that anyone's welcome to attend.
Okay. Counselor Heson?
It's coming weekends, the cricket ball fair. For anyone who might, so there's not that many, um, or fairs around, but Mitchell has one and this was a great one. Crickets is going very well. This is coming weekend and there's always lots to see and do.
And you're going to bring ingredients on behalf of the county, I mean, is correct?
I'm going to be there, yeah. So I was, I was going to ask you that for sure.
Yeah.
Russ Duncan wants to come and do it. What, and sure, he asked.
Yeah, I already asked him. He can. So and I have a, I had an event with the mayor, as the mayor in Perth East that same day. So it can't be two places at one. And unfortunately, they're both the same time. So that's great. If you bring ingredients on the, of the county. Anything else? Something I should have did when all the managers were here and directors and, but, uh, you just can, the ones that aren't here, you can tell them to watch the screen, but I want to thank staff for all you do. Every department, every department to me is important. Yous all work hard. You make us look good. There's so many moving parts. And, uh, I know I made a comment this morning to economic development, but everybody, all the departments, I appreciate everything that everybody does. And, uh, it's great. So this year we've decided to change the, um, what we normally do. It's always been tradition to have a Warden's banquet and we've changed the name of that. And this year I want it to be about staff. It's thanks to that, all that they've done and everything else. And it's going to be on the tenth of November. And it's going to be at the Perk in Milverton. Um, dinner's going to be at six thirty, so we encourage everyone to come, all, all staff. And it's, it's their night. It's, it's about staff and we're going to celebrate staff and thank them for, for what they do. So if yous could pass the message on to to everyone, that'd be greatly appreciated. So. Okay, if that's nothing else, then we do need to have closed session. And I have a motion that Perth County Council move into closed session at approximately eleven twenty-five in accordance with section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act S O two zero zero one, C dot twenty-five. Consider a matter pertaining to instruction to be applied to negotiations at some public works and a matter pertaining to labor relations and that's in paramedics. So I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Kassenberg. All those in favor? Carrie. Okay, we do have, um, a bylaw, a bylaw three nine four two dash twenty twenty-three being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation, the county of Perth at its regular meeting held September seven, two thousand and twenty-three. It's read a first, second and third time and finally passed September seven, two thousand and twenty-three. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Smith. All those in favor? Carrie, and that we adjourn at eleven thirty-eight A M. Moved by Counselor Orr, second by Counselor Duncan. All those in favor? Carrie. Thanks, everyone. Great meeting. Lot of stuff, uh, we went over and I hope everyone has a great, uh, rest of their day. Thank you.